I apologize for being just a few minutes late. I'm Sissy Gonzalez-Dippel, Mayor of the City of Florisville, calling this meeting to order. Regular meeting of June 8, 2017. If you would please rise for the invocation. Dear Father, we come to you tonight, giving you all of our cares and concerns. Ask you for guidance and direction for the best of the City of Florisville. It's all in your hands. May you watch over, protect, and direct. We thank you, in the Lord Jesus's name, amen. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one in indivisbar.
We have a floor for tonight's meeting. In attendance, we have Councilman David Johns, Councilwoman Lori Cantu, myself, Sissy Gonzalez-Dippel as your mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, Councilman Jacob Silva, we have Councilman Meg Neeson, and Councilman Gerard Jimenez, all in attendance. At this time, I will give any citizens the opportunity for citizens' comments. We ask that you have five minutes. I do have a timer for this, but I'll... We don't have a sign-up sheet, so the first ones can just come down the aisle, and we'll take it from there.
Mayor, Council, pregnant's office, Florisville. As a citizen, I am concerned as to how objective this investigation has been, and I'm referring to one about the police department. If the focus group element is any indicator, there is room for question. While, as Dr. Taylor said, he was not directly involved in the group selection, leaving this totally up to the requesting party led this process open to stacking the outcome, so to speak. I don't know what the objectively random system was used in selecting, but from what I saw, the invited participants did not appear to be a cross-section of our towns' business folks/six citizens. More significantly, the only council folks there were those requesting the investigation. These two council folks knew what they were specifically striving for with it. Where was the other side, so to speak? Those who opposed the investigation. Thus, this one-sided presence would taint the objectivity. I understand this focus group element was but one cog in the overall process, but it is an indicator. And this was the only element of the investigation that was visible to us, to citizens, and only because some of us crashed the meeting, so to speak. As we evolve, we may have other indicators. Also, the amount of secrecy and lack of transparency throughout this whole endeavor tends to create question on its real purpose and how objective it is. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Lori. I want to talk to you about the annexation in different ways and see if I could ask some questions. First of all, I am for annexation, with some exceptions. I first want to make sure, because we're in a section where we have no power, we have no electricity, we don't have a paved road. We would like, of course, police protection, fire protection, garbage, and I wanted to see what are your ideas, future ideas, for this?
This is the Citizens' Call of Duty. We are going to have a public hearing afterwards, and then you'll have a chance to ask questions.
But will it cover that? That is kind of really important, I think, to everybody in this room?
Yes.
If there's going to be an annexation.
There would.
There would, okay. That's what I wanted to make sure, we would get improvements if we did move forward with an annexation, as long as also staying ag exempt. And I believe that might be the case as well. And I know a lot of people in here want to make sure they don't lose their ag-exempt status. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you for your time.
Good evening, Council. Joanne Yuhas, Wilson County. I would initially like to thank Sissy Dippel and her husband for supporting our scholarship fundraiser this past Saturday, and also Monica Flores came, and she actually won the women's target shooting. So, really appreciate your support. When, in the past, it has been the perception, and not always just perception, that city council was not business-friendly. And businesses sometimes struggle within the City of Florisville. I would urge you to please take that into consideration with whatever ordinances or ideas you have, and that you include the businesses in proposals to try to grow business and improve our city at the same time. I also would like to address what's on the agenda today. I've been hearing conflicting reports, and I know there's been concerns regarding the police department in the past, and well-founded. However, I would like to feel assured that this is not a vendetta, that this is being objective, that whatever is proposed, if there is further action that needs to be taken, that that will happen. If in fact there isn't, then we move forward with working with our police department. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mary Helen Teague, and I'm a resident of Florisville. What I want to start by saying is that none of my comments are meant to be personal. Please don't take my comments as personal. My interest is in the, what seems to be, a growing anti-business environment coming from the council. And I'm just giving you some advice from an owner, a business owner. Please take into consideration, this business license, for instance, that ordinance that I just saw today, along with the proposed ordinance on the signage, that I understand Mr. Huggs got from somewhere. I cannot imagine a 47-page document to cover signs in the city of our size. It's just beyond belief to me. But I would recommend that if you have complaints coming into you about signage in our city, and I agree that there are some things that need to be done, but consider the FEDC, Economic Development, consider Chamber of Commerce, and consider the businesses along the corridor, 181, and downtown, and get those folks involved. I understand there must have been a workshop. I didn't know about it. I was out of the state at that time. But directly engage these people. Don't just assume that they know about it. Please let us know about these things. Even, I mean, there are ways through emailing and other types of messaging to let us know when something this important comes up that affects every one of us, business owners. I think about the small mom and pops who will have to deal with these types of ordinances. It's a lot of money that you're talking about. So please, if you would, take that into consideration. I've just, I've really been disappointed and dismayed over what I've seen come out in terms of business, the effects on businesses in our community. I'm very disappointed, and I just would urge you to please consider the possibility of putting a committee together with those entities involved. We need economic development in our community, and I'm not sure that these types of ordinance will promote that. And Chris, come up with a shorter ordinance, okay?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. My name is Philip Vakon. I also wish to talk about the proposed sign ordinance. I'm not as politically correct as Mary Helen. It's brocomium. I've never seen anything so ridiculous in all my life. I want to put a sign up inside my shop downtown, supporting the police. I hope I have the permit for it. My company invested over $300,000 buying the premises we have downtown. This type of sign on it, signed ordinance, will drive businesses away, including mine. So please look at it very carefully. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Greg Hendricks, and I'm the commander of the American Legion Post 38 here in Florisville, your hometown team. Five years ago, the Legion decided to start celebrating Memorial Day because the city didn't do anything on Memorial Day. Matter of fact, the city still does not lower the flags at half-mast. We do it for them. The reason I'm here tonight is to thank the mayor. You're the first mayor in five years that we invited to our ceremony that has actually showed up. Your predecessors had no part of it. I also want to thank Councilwoman Cantu for participating in our ceremony. Our ceremony was held on May 29, 2017. Everybody got an invitation. For civilians, Memorial Day has become the gateway to summer, a cookout holiday, not to the military. The military world, it remains a deeply observed day of remembrance for those who died fighting our country's battles. Memorial Day holds memories of combat brothers and sisters who never came home. Because of this, a wide gap between military and civilians has come about, more and more every year. We watch. We watch politicians, when it's the right time, take a flag and go and wave it in front of everybody. Take a poor veteran, stand him up in front, and then when it's over, let's get away. Can't even fix the VA. So again, thank you, Mayor, Councilman Cantu, for standing with us, your veterans, on that special day. I hope to see more of you next year. One other thing. I was the security director for Mall of America, the largest mall in the United States. It was 5.2 million square feet. We had 23,000 parking spaces. We had seven ramp parking concrete structures on each side. I had everything a police department has, probably more than Florisville, because our budget was over $4 million. And we got inspected all the time. My only caution, when you have inspections come in that you pay for, is you better get a second opinion. Thank you.
My name is Rick Cantu, and I'm a citizen of Florisville. And I want to apologize because I do not good speaking, especially when I'm emotional. So I try to write things down so I can get my point across. It's hard for me to explain things when I'm angry, disgusted, and really, I despise when politicians have backdoor secret meetings to do bad, evil things. It infuriates me. I use words that politicians use. It's, I'm infuriated, I'm appalled, it's deplorable, me myself, I just want to cuss, and cuss, and cuss. But my mama, when she was alive, she said, "No, miho, don't cuss, because when you cuss, Jesus gets sad." And I believe that. So I try not to cuss. But I am his father. Our chief wanted to serve his community. In 1993, he was born and raised here. 1993, he became a reserve officer. 1994, he became a full-time patrolman for a walking $7, and I forget how much spent an hour. In June of 1997, he became sergeant. They put him on the dog watch. I don't know if that was a promotion, but if you don't know, dog watch is from 6:00 PM to 4:00 AM in the morning. Working in the dark against criminals that just lurk in the dark, you can't see them. They can see you with a law enforcement officer or patrolman. They're moving targets. And we've been blessed that we haven't had no crazy terrorists come here. But if they do, all those men back there are going to be the first ones that come to our help.
Yes, sir.
And Lorenzo will be right in front. Lorenzo worked at a disadvantage at night for many, many, many years. Patrolly put in his life on the line every day, which I don't know if there's very many people other than policemen that would dare do that. Protecting and servicing our community with honesty and integrity. April of 2011, his dream came true. He became chief of police. Immediately, he had a vision, get better cars, better equipment, better training for his officers. That was the very first thing that he started fighting for. His long-term goal still, he wants a police department with their own dispatch system to have better response times. Right now, he needs more officers, and he needs more officer space. For all these years, his wife supported it, in good times and bad, and he had a lot of bad. He even was a puppet. If he'd never done it, we don't know. He has two kids, one of them just graduated from Florisville, Ohio. He could have left and worked a lot of different places, made double the money, but he didn't. He wanted to stay here, stay here and serve his community, because he had a dream that he could be a good chief of police, not prejudiced, serve white, black, Mexican, or Asian, all types of people. He truly believed in it, and that's why he's served our community, because of that committee. He's done it for over 20 years. When any politician or any citizen wants to fire this man for all his service, for all his service, shame on you.
Yes.
Shame on you. Maybe it's because you want to hire a yes-man chief of police, or do me favors, chief of police. I don't know if this has any Russian ties, but that's why I'm pissed off.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council, staff and guests, my name is Juan Ortiz, born and raised there. I don't know what exactly is going on, but it doesn't look good. This council is setting a bad standard for future councils to do the same. It just doesn't look good. Work together if there are some discrepancies. Work it out and move on. It's dragging and dragging, and it's dragging the taxpayer, the community, and city. But I just take that under consideration, that future councils might come back and do the same thing. If it does go through, do the same thing as y'all do. Thank you very much.
At this time, any other citizens' comments?
My name is Apache Appaloosa. And I own 36 acres. And I don't want it to be the city because it's a farm. It's a pecan farm for people, and it's a hay farm for livestock. I live in Mandera, Texas. But I hardly never come to Florisville. Hardly never come to Florisville because I can't drive. And I can't drive because I'm blind. I need to get exams, like for an old guy, or whatever else there is. Pretend I don't know about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, boy. Some of y'all know me. I'm the ex-police chief for the Florisville Police Department, Danny Martinez. And today, I do have some concerns about what's going on. The police department was my brilliant bud. I did quite a bit for the police department. And I'm grateful for what the council did for me when I retired. But what I want to say is that most of the time when we had problems, either PD or the City Hall, we all just got together at the round table and say, "Hey, let's work things out." It does not cost us more than what we're making to make a good decision, a proper decision. Not one, when you're going to hire a consultant to come in and tell you deficiencies or deficiencies with the police department. Whatever that costs, I don't know. But that was money that could have been put to better use. And I have other issues with that consultant, but I won't disclose that at this point. But I do want to say that some of these guys I know, I've worked with, and it really... I'm like Rick, I'm getting a little choked up, but I don't see why things can't be worked out, but then the council, or the mayor, or one or two city manager, sit down and talk over the issues, have resolve them. And I know they can't. And I have an issue with a consultant coming in and looking at personnel files of the Florisville Police Department, which are confidential. He should have got a court order for that. If I had been chief, he had got, he better get a court order to look at my police department's personnel file, because there's stuff in there that you can't disclose to just anybody. If I sent undercover officer to another county to work, I don't want him looking at that. And I don't want that being part of the city hall records, no way. And those are issues that are going on, which are not right, and there may be state, federal law violations. But all I can do is tell you what's on my mind, and hope for the best, and hope that this does not, that this ends today. Thank you, appreciate your time.
Any other citizens' comments before we move forward?
Good afternoon. I want to say that I'm thankful that we're having all this hot discussion. I'm very, very interested. But coming from my point of view, I have been through a lot. Back in the days, when we were in the older community, we had a lot of good and bad. We had a lot of stuff under the table. Take it from me, I know. Sometimes I tried to enter in some of the meetings, they had to lock doors, they wouldn't let me in. But what I'm saying, some of this was under the table, nobody's supposed to say anything, we're supposed to go with them, and they've been at it for years. So I go home, and I wait with it. But God knows that some of them did the wrong thing and did not bother to think about the needy, the poor, the sick, the handicapped. Because sometimes I would get up and I'd mention it to them, and they'd sit me down. Fine. None of us is expected to be here forever, but just think, one day, some of us might be there. Thank God, help us stand. Thank you.
Okay. Any other citizens' comments before we go forward?
Thank you. My name is Charlie Wilson. And on this problem, or what you were talking about with the police department, I'm not sure what the investigation's about. I haven't heard much about that. I just recently retired. Now that I, and now that I am retired, I can participate more in what's going on in my community. My wife and I, we listen to a scanner, the police department, sheriff department. We hear these men and women work every day, putting their lives on the line. May 15th, I heard nothing, or heard, didn't hear anybody say any word appreciation to the police department, not one police officer. And we hear these people work every day. Now, I think that's shameful. Our community should be angry about that. I know I was. But I think these people should be given more consideration, and they should be thanked for what they do, and I thank you.
If no other citizen comments, we will move on to our public hearing. And this will be presented by Mr....
Excuse me. Thank you, Ms. Mayor, and Council. My name is Chris Stewart. I'm with movie engineering, based out of Austin. I've been working with your planning and zoning commission, with your staff, and with the council since 2014. We started, I started working with your planning and zoning commission at that point initially on developing the city's first future land use map. This was an effort that we went through to try and understand how the city was growing, where the pressures were, where the areas of the city were that we needed to be able to protect with zoning, with land use authority. And also, we began looking at where we would strategically need to be thinking about annexation. Annexation is kind of a necessary part of a city's growth and development. It ensures that growth happens in an orderly fashion, that utilities are extended in a logical and coordinated fashion, and it helps to ensure that the, all the great things about the local community are shared in their maintenance and their costs by all who use it, and not just those who are part of an existing city limit. So we began looking at various areas, especially on the 181 corridor and on the 97 corridor. We also began looking at some areas where annexation hadn't happened in the past, for whatever reason. But the result was it created kind of a jigsaw pattern, up and down, the city limits meandered in and out, came in and out, and it became a very difficult situation for both your city administration, as well as your county services, such as the Wilson County Sheriff, and your EMS, to know, okay, or... County Sheriff, and your EMS, to know, okay, are we inside, are we outside the city limits with this particular property, who responds? Taking all that together, we launched an effort under Chapter 43 of Local Government Code, 43052, which is to set up a...